We will now open the reorganization meeting if everyone would stand to say the pledge.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order is to swear in our newly elected board members, Jean Ernst, Lynn Arrington, and Paul Steinle, if you would all stand. You have your oath in front of you, and if you would raise your right hand, and you can say it simultaneously.
I, Paul Steinle, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Board of Education members of the Amherst Central School District according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
And if you would please sign that and then return it to me.
You're up next, you're right.
Thank you.
Say the oath.
Our second order of business is to elect board officers. Are there any nominations for board president? I would like to nominate Paul Steinle to be president of the board president. I will need a motion.
I'll second this, Chris.
Okay, I actually need a motion and then a second.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Smith. I'll second that. And second, I, Jess. All those in favor of Paul Steinle as president, please say aye.
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 And he knows, that would be seven zero, motion carries. I will now need a nomination for vice president.
I'll nominate Jean Ernst, please.
Okay. And I will need a motion for this nomination. I'll motion a nomination. I'll second. Thank you very much. All those in favor of Jean Ernst as vice president of the Board of Education, please say aye.
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 And he knows, congratulations, motion carries, seven zero. I will now need Mr. Steinle as president and Mrs. Ernst as vice president to say another oath for those positions. And again, if you would please stand and raise your right hand. I.
I, Paul Steinle, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of Board of Education president of the Amherst Central School District according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Thank you. If you would sign those, and again, give those to me, and the remainder of the meeting is yours, Mr. Steinle. Thank you.
All right. Would you then like a motion to approve for all the candidates?
Oh, I did. I did put this, you can look at that sheet paper right in front of you.
Oh, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
It's your first day as president.
Right. I will need a motion then to approve the following reorganization items for A through F, V, A through FF, six, A through I, sorry, four, five, six, seven, A through F, eight, nine, A through J, and ten, A through N, oh, and eleven, A through M.
I'd like to make a motion for all those.
I'll second that, as long as you don't repeat it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. I will now need to administer the oath to the district clerk, Debbie Custody, an acting clerk in the absence of district clerk Laura Bazinski.
And those are attached. Thank you.
Please stand.
And Rachel, I think she.
I know. Ready?
Yes. I, Laura Bazinski, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of district clerk of the Amherst Central School District according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
And I will need to sign those.
I'll now need a motion to adjourn the reorganization portion of this meeting.
Do we need, do we need to do the committee thing, committee representation, or is that all set?
I think that's all set. Everybody was looking to go back to their respective spots from. Sorry, yes, everybody agreed ahead of time to go back. Does anyone want to change their committees from what we? All right. Then I will need a motion to adjourn the reorganization portion of this meeting.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the reorganization portion of the meeting.
You have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carries seven zero. At this time, the reorganization portion of this meeting is adjourned, and the regular session begins. Do we have any, we have no business.
We know that.
Okay. Report a special committee, Sandy.
I just wanted to mention that on the very last day of school, the Smallwood reopening committee did meet via Zoom, and we did discuss that we don't have another meeting coming up until we have new protocols in place from this new year. So, kind of at a standstill now. However, during our meeting, we did discuss some things during the pandemic that we thought worked very well and we'd like to keep in place, such as the arrival and dismissal process, the usage of outside spaces, which was really lovely, and they were kind of broadened our classrooms using our entire campus. So, things like that will be kept in place regardless of where the state lands with their procedures.
Great.
More updates, because we have lots of meetings coming up, so.
Great. Anyone else?
So, some of us in the learning committee is meeting on Thursday.
All right. I have on here too a discussion of the Board of Education protocol. Nothing's changed. It's in your packet in front of you, if everyone is good with that. All right. I'll look at that, and then we'll go right into the superintendent's report.
Well, thank you. And I would just to make a note regarding the board member protocol. You know, it's nice to have, and you know, as a reference, but during a pandemic, it's certainly important for us to implement it with fidelity, and the board really did that, and it really made for streamlined communication and I think cohesiveness amongst the board during a really difficult time. So, thank you for that, and thank you for, I guess, recommitting to that for another year. As Mrs. Nablaughlin mentioned, our reopening committees are active and they're prepared and ready to meet. We did get guidance from the CDC last week Friday, which surprisingly seemed to be very open-ended. So, we are anticipating that the New York State Department of Health will weigh in with some level of guidance or guidelines, and maybe even State Education Department. So, we're poised and ready to review that and revise our plans as needed for the fall. In the meantime, you may recall that one of the big components of our stimulus money was to ramp up our summer school programming, mostly to address learning loss from the past year, as well as try to close some academic gaps prior to the start of next school year. So, Dr. Shanahan is here to talk about our summer programming, which has kicked off very successfully this week and last week at all levels, and what is different about it this year. Welcome.
Thank you. So, as we were closing school down, we were planning for summer school simultaneously in a very robust summer school, unlike we've ever had before. Especially at the elementary, the offerings were very expansive, we felt. So, tonight, I just want to give you a really brief overview of what's happening at the elementary, middle, and high school levels. So, at the elementary level, we decided that it was important to offer summer school to both home schools. We had also considered putting them together in one, and we decided that it was best to keep people in their home schools, so they're in their neighborhoods, and walking to school, et cetera, are all options for them. So, Windermere and Smallwood both have summer school. We provided three attendance options, hoping for flexibility so that we would gain in attendance numbers. We offered six weeks of summer school for those that were interested, which started today and goes until August 19th. And then we thought people may want time with families, because it's been quite the year. So, they might want to send their child for three weeks, but also have time to do some family things the other. So, we offered the first three weeks as one option, or the second three weeks as another. So, there are three different choices for our families to pick from. We decided to run Monday through Thursday, knowing that Friday is usually has low attendance, and people like three-day weekends as well with their families. And so, the morning at the elementary, they can start arriving around eight, eight-ten to eleven-thirty is the length of our academic day. We also, I worked with Mrs. Bazinski around meals, transportation. So, we are serving breakfast and lunch. If students only stayed for half a day, they can still take lunch home with them. So, we had that worked out with Tracy. That was really helpful. So, we have, we decided that the stress on our families has been a lot, and if we could provide extended care after the academic part of summer school ends, that that might help people, so they wouldn't have to leave work in the middle of the day, go pick up your kids, and go back. They've done a lot of juggling this year already. So, Mrs. Bazinski and I work with Just for Kids, and we have the extended day at one building. That's what they could, then they didn't need as much administrative staff split between buildings. So, a bus can take the students from Smallwood over to Windermere, and the regular afternoon runs whenever they arrive after eleven-thirty to four-thirty, and if they need to five or five-thirty, they individually work that out with Just for Kids. But we thought it was important to use some stimulus money to cover the cost of this, because we also did not want some of our families that have been struggling financially not to send their kids, and have to determine if they needed a full-day daycare versus having us as an option. So, that, we tried to consider all aspects and the stresses that we've all been under this year. So, transportation, we are offering it to school, which we had not done before. We are offering it home from school around eleven-thirty, and then we offer that bus from Smallwood to Windermere for the people that would like to stay for an extended day. But our busing all stops at eleven-thirty after that. After that, it's up to the parents to pick them up at the end of the day. This is what our final numbers ended up being per building. We did invite approximately 300 students, and these were the results. We were at 200 total, but then at the last minute, we had some people back out. So, we're, I think, at 160, what were we, 169 was our total as of Thursday. We tried to go with a theme. We want them to want to be there. So, we were thinking Olympics, and we went with a Tiger Olympics theme. Some of our reading, writing, and math activities will be around that theme, as well as our science. So, there's three content areas we wanted to focus on. One was literacy, dealing with both reading and writing. One of the things that happened in the first closure was students had less time to write and get feedback, so we knew that that was an area. Even this year, they did more of it, but we knew that was an area that had to be focused on, as well as reading. And then we also knew that math would be important, and science. Science is critical to increase students' vocabulary. It increases their ability to comprehend text, and so we thought that was really important. So, it's all hands-on. There are, they can incorporate reading from their earlier parts of the day in with this, but this is supposed to be all hands-on, highly engaging, embodied learning, right? We learn through movement, we will learn through interactions, and that's how we retain information. So, we wanted to make sure that that was a critical piece in there. Writing, guided reading, which is the instructional reading part, which is where students will get instruction on their levels, interactive read-alouts, and the shared reading at the end will be above their levels, so we'll extend them. So, basically here, what's happening is we're extending them here, we're hitting, I'm sorry, here, we're hitting them at their level here and at their level here. So, we want to make sure we're extending and getting right at their sweet spot. And obviously, we're focusing on all of our standards with ELA during this time period. I don't expect you to read this whole sheet. I knew you would get copies. But one of the things that we did with ELA and math is all the teachers, before they left the end of the school year, they took and filled out a sheet on the standards in an Excel spreadsheet, and they did an audit of how well and in depth they covered the different standards. And from there, our, we had several teachers work with me on the curriculum writing for the summer. We pulled out math concepts, K through four, that we'd want to revisit, and then we also provided lesson formats for them to follow as well. So, we could see per grade level what was hit more frequently, which standards were hit more frequently, which ones were not, and which ones are high utility that the state really focuses on a little bit more, and we made sure that those were a part of our focal points of instruction this summer. And then, obviously, we're giving them a lesson format that we're expecting as well. So, I'm going to move on to middle school at this point. So, middle school, they started last, last week. They went, they're going to seventh through August 10th, and they're still going Monday through Thursday as well. We're also providing breakfast and lunch. And Mrs. Bazinski worked with us on transportation, because kids are attending for different classes to different parts of the day. We didn't want them sitting and not having rides. So, there's a morning bus around eight-ten, and early afternoon after those couple mid-morning classes finish, and then later in the afternoon for students that have to stay for the whole day. We invited fifth graders here. So, I don't know if you noticed, I only stopped at, I stopped at grade four. The reason is because we thought some of our fifth graders could come over here and transition and get a taste of the middle school. So, we're expecting a little bit of social-emotional work being done there, introduction to the middle school as a piece of this transition for them. So, that was new this year, the first time trying this. We've got a low number. We originally had 40 say yes, and then all of a sudden, 20 backed down. But usually, when one middle schooler tells another they're not coming, it's not uncommon for it to go around pretty quickly. But we did get 20 fifth graders, and as far as I'm concerned, if we can get them in here, it's going to make their transition into the middle school next year that much easier. And then those are the numbers per, per class that are coming in. These are the courses that we were offering. So, ELA and math are going to be grades five through eight. Science is grade six through eight, social studies, six through eight, and Spanish and French is grade seven and eight. Shifting to high school, similar in start date, July 7th to August 10th, Monday through Thursday, also serving breakfast and lunch to them, and transportation is off by a few minutes, because we're coordinating some bussing there between buildings. I'm actually very proud of the number being only 118. I have to tell you, our high school, Mr. Pigeon said to me way back in October and beginning of November, when you start to see a train gearing off a track, you don't wait for it to fall off the track. And I think they worked in as many different avenues as they could to try to get kids back in, starting with the Wednesdays earlier, then when, you know, we can invite more people in, and it was health, you know, healthy and safe, he did that. But they also took the last semester, I mean, they literally did things like picked kids in, up, brought them in on Wednesdays. These are the assignments you need to finish. So, they worked really hard to get in touch with the students and then try to get them into the school if they could, and if they were willing, and their parents were supportive in it, so that we would not have as many students that were not passing courses. So, that was really, I thought that was good work to be done. We couldn't reach everybody, but I thought there was a good effort there to do so.
Dr. Shanahan, are those numbers for ninth grade, would that be, the children who were in ninth grade this past year?
Mm-hmm, so they're ninth, yes.
So, there's not, they're going into 10th, but you counted them in ninth.
These are the ninth graders this year, yeah. We didn't move the eighth graders up this year, because there's a difference with their credits and how they count. We talked about it, but we didn't do it. So, these, yes, this is different, thank you. These are the ninth graders from this year, 39 of them had to do some extra work on some courses. And we've typically done credit recovery in the high school, but these are actually full-blown in-person courses. We did have some questions about, are we running remote? We chose not to, because a lot of the people that were doing remote that needed the summer school were not successful during the school year. So, we decided that we wanted to get them in. And I did go over on Thursday, and the students in the one reading, our ELA literacy class in ninth grade, were actually excited to be writing and reading with pencils and books and not a computer. So, they were like, this is good. So, we did, the other theme through all this is I did ask them to unplug a little bit. So, we did ask that, you know, you get real books in kids' hands, you put paper and pencil in front of them. It's not that our older kids might not use a Google Doc here or there, but I don't want kids sitting on applications. I don't want them on software programs. I want them interacting with manipulatives, interacting with you, talking with one another in safe ways. So, that was kind of the marching orders that we all thought should move forward as we worked with the teachers.
So, with the three 12th graders, that'd be like what we have known as credit recovery, they need to potentially graduate and stuff?
Yeah, so we ran both planes. So, we have always done credit recovery, which is a little less intensive as far as us coming in and running a course, per se. And so, we did run those, and actually, for some people, it works out better if they're working and there's other, you know, complexities there. So, Mr. Pigeon wanted to advocate it to keep that and then run a full summer school with courses and you're attending in person and complexes. So, we're offering both, hoping to meet both needs. And then these are the courses. Obviously, you're not going to read to them all right now, but you have copies of the presentation. So, if you're wondering what, what we're offering, it's basically your required courses that kids need to graduate and to accrue their credits.
Questions? So, Shanahan, do you have an idea of how many people took advantage of the Just for Kids?
I do. Do you have the latest number, Laura?
Forty-nine.
Forty-nine, it's still forty-nine.
Okay, forty-nine.
And can, do you feel good about that? I mean, any way we could support families was really important. And Just for Kids was fantastic, working contracts with Laura and I, and then working with first student to get it all done. Yeah, it's great, forty-nine. So, it didn't increase anymore, but.
How concerned were you about the number of students that did not attend the summer school, especially in the elementary?
Uh, not overly, to be honest. I think that we have plans, and we have looked, before the school year ended, maybe all of the teachers had the opportunity to look at where gaps are. And then, for example, this week, today, actually, the six-through-12 math teachers met, and this will happen with every curriculum group that we have in every content area, they are looking to realign their curriculum to meet those needs. So, I think we're going to hit them again, and we're going to intensify that. We are offering after-school during the school year next year, programs to catch, to, obviously, we want them there, but I think there are also reasons, you know, personal reasons why people don't come. So, I, it's personal choice, I guess. I'm hoping that we'll catch them up during the year.
Well, we heard regularly from the teachers that although the, you know, attendance pattern wasn't ideal for families, and a hybrid model, two days a week, and then a third-day remote, the teachers did say, you know, with having eight to 10 kids in the class all day long, that they didn't feel like they missed a lot of instruction that they would have in a typical school year, because there was more personal attention for the children, and they were able to cover similar amount of content that they would in a normal school year, when you might have 22 to 23 in a classroom, five days a week. So, I don't, I don't know that at the elementary level, the gaps are as severe as when you're dealing with higher level content and credits at the middle and high school level.
And that also reminds me that we did give a pretty imposed screening, a fast-paced screening, which will, given a general indication that there, you know, where there might be an issue, we were surprised that the numbers didn't drop. So, I would have to go back and look at them again, but they weren't, they weren't indicating large gaps, like Mr. Penel said. But when we went back and talked to the teachers, they were very clear on, we had eight kids, that we weren't running with 20-some kids in a classroom, right? We were actually with eight, and we could help them immediately, and we can move them forward. So, but we'll, we'll stay on it. I mean, everybody's looking at the curriculum alignment we have after-school. I just met with Windermere and Smallwood coming up with a bunch of after-school programs to also facilitate in gaps for the students that did not attend. We're going again on one word, and are you going to help them in the summer, or we're going to help them during the school year?
Well, and we planned multiple years of this level of summer school. So, this isn't the only summer, but it, for many reasons, we felt like it was the most important to get up and running this summer. But we'll have two or three more opportunities with this level of summer school.
How do the numbers meet our expectation? Like, what, in terms of, the number of kids who signed up, did we expect more, or are we right where we thought, or?
I expected more high school mid-year, because I think I had written and reported to the board a couple times, that we were falling within national average, with students that were not, you know, were failing one or two classes, and that was very concerning. But I do have to say, I think at that point, we countered. So, I was a little, I thought there would be more there, but I also went down and saw what they were doing the last few months of school, just to try and to reach kids and get them in. Same thing was happening at the middle school. They had a little bit more of a space issue with how much they could do. They were a little more tied with space, but I'm not quite as surprised. I wish we would have had all 200 elementary, because we had 200 at one point, and then some dropped off. But I think, I think some of it too is, look, kids need to be motivated. They may have needed to do something different. This has been a tough year on people. So, I'm not sure that there were other choices, and people picked up their options because of that. I would have loved to have all different. So, I, yeah, I wasn't.
Well, in the middle and high school is less of a choice. You know, if they want to continue on the right path towards graduating on time, the elementary, that's a little bit more of a choice as opposed to middle and high school. So, I think our numbers came in pretty solid at the middle and high school. Elementary, I think you mentioned we invited 300, and we have 170-ish, so.
And we did not expect to get 300. We cast that net a little bit wider, but at one point, we were at 200, and we were really excited about that. The other thing we have to mention is knowing that we may not be able to catch people summers in after-school with some of the stimulus money we added in intervention positions next year, so that we have time to reach those students during the school day when they're there, which is going to be very helpful. And that's part of our summer work with training our interventionists and having solid intervention programs in place for them. So, we're going to get, hit this on multiple levels, not just, it's just not out of the school day that it's being done. So, we're hoping that we can catch up in the school day as well.
Were there a number of kids in high school that decided not to go to summer school, or just going to retake classes?
I don't know that. They didn't give me that information. They just shared with me that how many came that were actually coming. I, I don't think it's a large number, but I could check on that for you and get back. I need to ask Greg what the actual numbers, Mr. Pigeon, what the actual numbers are.
Is that, um, that were required to, that was planned?
I'll, I'll report that back.
Well, thank you for all your hard work in setting this up.
Thank you.
As you mentioned a couple times, you know, we've, especially at our elementary schools, we've never had a district-sponsored summer school. You know, we've had summer scholars, parents had to pay for it. You know, so this year, offering transportation, meals, district-sponsored summer school, even the fact that many of our teachers stepped up to take these summer school teaching positions after the rigorous year that they had and all the changes, says a lot about our district. And this is a great program that we're looking forward to for a few summers to come, and then we'll see what happens after that, what stays. As Mrs. Nablaughlin pointed out, some, there are some good things that will come out of the pandemic, and hopefully, district-sponsored summer school at all four of our buildings will be one of them, but we'll see. Thank you.
I do remember that will 100% answer your question, but they invited 125 at some high school, and 118 actually accepted out, so.
Well, thank you so much. Does that, Mr. Violo answer your question, or do you want another?
No, which, which I.
Okay, so we can think that of the follow-up action items? Thank you, Dr. Shanahan, and Mrs. Bazinski, for all your hard work in setting that up. That's all we have for the superintendent's report.
All right, then I will need a motion to approve new business items. I guess it'd be eighteen, nineteen, A through D, and twenty, C, D, and G.
I'll make a motion to do those. I'll make a motion to do those.
Is it your Roman numerals?
I thought you were going to try. Eighteen, A through H, nineteen, A through D, twenty, C, D, and G.
You have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor of approving new business items, eighteen, nineteen, A through D, and twenty, C, D, and G, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. First of all, I'd like to welcome all our new team members. I don't know who's here. There is quite a few new team members here on our list, at least 14-plus that I'm looking at. If you wouldn't mind just standing up and just giving us your name, what building you're going to be at, we would greatly appreciate knowing who you are.
I may look familiar. My name's David Mansfield. I've been here at the middle school for eight years. I do the Bump for Bucks after-school program. And after many years of hard work and going back and getting better, I'd be teaching special ed. I don't know for sure what, I think, grade seven. So, I'm transitioning up into the teaching, and I'm super excited. I don't usually get too excited, but.
Congratulations.
Mr. Kaffman called me. I honestly had to briefly stop and compose myself, because I think he's had a lot to do. So, I'm super excited.
Well, so you're already a team member, but now coming to a new role.
And I'm doing summer school as well, so I'm.
Great. Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anyone else here?
Hi, I'm Carolyn Sappelo. I'm going to be working as an integrated co-teacher at Smallwood Drive. Don't know what grade level yet, so no surprises.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
I'm Melissa Ractica, just like Dave. I'm also a familiar face, hopefully. I was a ten-year teacher at Windermere, and then took some time off from my family and came back last year to Williamsville. Four days before the school year, they're like, hey, want to teach remote first grade? I'm like, yeah, that sounds like fun. What am I doing? But it really was fun, and it really showed me that I really love teaching. I missed it. I knew that before. So, I was so happy when Amherst was offering a science-integrated consultant teaching position at the middle school. I was like, I had to read the position like three or four times, like, really? Is this like too good to be true? I think I put down my cover letter. This is my dream job. Hiring, no, I think, that blunt. But so, I'm really happy to be here, back at the middle school and part of the Amherst team.
Welcome back. All right, great. It is also very nice to be back in our normal boardroom. Windermere was very nice. These chairs are much more comfortable than cafeteria chairs, so.
Well, and as you noted, the hiring season has been very busy, and Mr. Bellisle and the other administrators have done an amazing job identifying great energy and talented young people and experienced people that are going to come in and I think have a very positive impact on our district. But I know Mike has worked around the clock to make sure that we can get all these appointments on this agenda, and we've seen several before this. And it's probably the busiest hiring season we've ever had in the history of the district. I don't know if you recall the number off the top of your head, but I think 34 at one point was.
About 34, with some comments still saying.
Yeah.
We'll be close to 30.
So, amazing, pulling that together. And we just found out, what was it, April 1st, what our stimulus dollars were going to look like. So, we pulled that together in a very short period of time. But the process was very rigorous, and we've identified some great candidates.
Well done, Mr. Bellisle.
Busy.
So, do you have any follow-up action?
There are none.
All right, then we will need a motion to convene to executive session.
I'll make a motion to convene to executive session for management, governance, initiation, and administration. Amherst Office of Professional Association, litigation, and employment, and office of emergency.
One second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, everybody, for coming.